Call the meeting order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Joyner?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum present. Welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. If you would stand for the prayer and prayers, please. Bless prayer. As gracious as heavenly Father, we always thank you for the blessings that you give us. And Father, we take for granted those blessings sometimes, but we thank you for the rain that you provided for us over the last few days. And we know that the ground here in our community certainly is in need of it to produce the fruits of the labor of the folks that do plant in it and, of course, and provide us with much-needed water. But we also know, Father, that there are those who suffer from the storms tonight, both with the wind damage and the water damage. We ask that you would be with them, just as you've blessed us. We ask that you watch over this body this evening, lead us and guide us in the direction that you would have us go. Help us to remember that we are here to serve our community. And, Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom to do so. We ask the same of our state and national leaders, Lord, as they lead us through these times. Bless all of those who serve our country, both here and abroad. We thank you for all that you do for us, and we ask this in your holy name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the January 22nd. Council meeting minutes?
Still move.
Second. If a motion and a second, any discussion, any additions, deletions, or corrections. Hearing now and ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. We're moved to old business. We have a public hearing this evening to consider ordinance 014, to consider rezoning of 604 South Jefferson Street. If you will bear with me just a moment, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to read you the structure that we will handle that public hearing. Once it's been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, then I'll ask the clerk if he would read this proposed amendment. We'll hear the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment. And then I would hear from any person who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment. If there is opposition to the amendment, we will give those involved an opportunity for rebuttal. And when I recognize any person or persons who would like to testify, I would ask first if you approach the podium, give your name and address for the record. Any one of you is encouraged to speak, however, in the essence of time. I am requesting that you keep your comments as brief as possible and certainly germane to the subject at hand. Again, this hearing is to consider ordinance 014 to amend the Land Development Code, rezone 604 South Jefferson Street. And I'll ask the clerk at this time if the public hearing has been correctly posted and advertised.
Yes, sir, it has.
Would you read the ordinance in caption, please?
This is conduct a public hearing of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to rezon property located at 604 South Jefferson Street from SFD to CC. This property is currently owned by the estate of Mary F. Stinson.
And would you present the decision of planning and zoning, please?
Yes, sir. It was unanimous that it not be recommended for approval.
Anyone like to speak in favor of the amendment? Yes, ma'am. Would anyone like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Question.
Yes, sir.
When you say in favor of the amendment?
It is a little confusing because it was denied. Yes, sir, but we do have to ask if anyone would like to speak in favor of the denial. No, ma'am, that's not appropriate at this time. We would just like to ask if anyone would like to speak in favor of the planning and zoning's decision to deny this. Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. I assume that there would be some. Okay, come forward. If you would state your name and if you would move that microphone, just so everybody can hear you outside.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is E. Roger Stinson, and I represent the estate of Mary Frances Stinson. I provided a written statement previously. I am appealing a decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission denying my request to rezon property located at 604 South Jefferson Street. By application dated October 24, 2012, I requested this property be rezoned from FSD, which is residential, to CC, Community Commercial, I believe, for the purpose of locating a coffee shop slash restaurant. Now, 604 South Jefferson Street is surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial properties. No one residing in the neighborhood objected to the rezoning request. One individual spoke against the rezoning. Now, this individual does not live in the neighborhood, but owns an apartment next to 604 South Jefferson Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission, in my opinion, should not be influenced by any one particular individual when it comes to these kinds of decisions. Historically, commercial businesses and residential communities have coexisted side by side for years in Millersville. And I believe in my written statement that I provided, I listed a list of businesses that have coexisted in our communities. These businesses that I had listed no longer exist, however. Now, Millersville has been hit very hard with the closing of Ring, Central State Hospital, YDC, state prisons, Shaw Industries, and now Georgia Power. According to the 2010 census, the population of Millersville was approximately 17,715 people. According to that same census data, blacks represented approximately 42%. And I can say, and it's not in my written comments, but that number once was 49%. So you have to ask yourself, well, what's happening to the black population? Whites represented approximately 52.4% or 9,287 individuals. The median household income was $28,764. The poverty rate, 36.9% in Millersville, very high. This means that of 17,715 people living in Millersville, approximately 6,555 live in poverty. From 2000 to 2010, the Millersville population growth percentage was negative 5.6%. So instead of growth, Millersville lost individuals. Why? No jobs, quality of life. Some people would say we have a great quality of life. I grew up in Millersville, and I come back to Millersville very often. I now live in Northern Virginia, and I don't have anything to do. I mean, and the biggest complaint that I hear from black adults is that there is no place to go to socialize. Big problem. According to the 2007 census data, there were 2,236 businesses in Millersville. Now, blacks represent less than 2% of these businesses. And I can say, what I'm trying to do is bring businesses, or bring business to Millersville. And I don't want to just characterize this as a black business. Money is green, so I want to bring business to Millersville. But I do want to emphasize the difference between white businesses and black businesses. I mean, there is a great shortage of minority enterprises in Millersville. Now, there is ample precedent for granting zoning and rezoning requests to commercial zoning for properties similar to the property located at 604 South Jefferson Street. I have listed some of those properties that have been rezoned commercial in my written statement that I provided previously. In conclusion, I ask that you approve the request to rezon the property located at 604 South Jefferson Street from residential to commercial because we want to invest in Millersville. Any questions that you have, I'd be glad to answer.
Council members, any question for Mr. Rogers, Mr. Stinson?
Mr. Mayor, I have a brief question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson. The planning and zoning meeting, what was the feedback that you received when you attended the P&amp;Z meeting?
I didn't attend. And matter of fact, I wasn't certain. It wasn't clear to me that I could attend, so I did not attend. And, of course, I live in Virginia, so those are some of the considerations. I thought that it was a pretty good, pretty good case. You know, you have a prime piece of property. It's mixed use. There are commercial businesses all around. There's a daycare center a half a block away. There's a beauty salon a half a block away. There used to be a restaurant, Hogan's. It doesn't exist now, but I used to attend that restaurant, provided them business. There was a beauty salon on the same block. Marie Lloyd. Her father ran a rosserso. So the community is just a mixed bag. So for them to deny it, I flabbergasted, really. And to do it unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject, on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I was there, the reason that the Planning and Zoning Commission denied the application is because the applicant was not there, and they had many questions about what kind of business was going to be placed there. And so they were not able to, they were not able to make an informed decision because they had no information on which to make that decision.
Well, you see, in that circumstance, there should have been a table.
Excuse me, sorry, I didn't catch it.
There should have been a tabling. It should have been tabled. If they had those kinds of questions that could not have been answered.
I think, Mr. Stinson, that may have happened had you indicated that you would not be there, then there may have been a situation where they may have entertained that, or you may have asked that in advance.
Again, I wasn't, it wasn't clear. Planning and zoning didn't inform me that I could be there.
I think you also have a responsibility, if you're the one that is applying for this.
I miss that. I miss it. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
You should look into that.
Absolutely. I'm not totally blaming them. I mean, I think there's blame on both sides relative to that.
To do what?
To rezon the property.
Yes, I did. Yes. No, I didn't. No. I didn't know that I could attend the proceedings.
Mr. Stinson, another question. You mentioned, and I did read your letter three times, cover to cover. You mentioned a coffee shop and a restaurant, and I was curious as to maybe more of the, my family owns a restaurant as well. I was curious as to more the specific nature of what your plans were for this.
You know, a lot of this is in the developmental stage. It's family property. We're paying, we've been paying taxes year after year. Code enforcement stays on our back, complaint after complaint about the grass, about the fact that the house is in disrepair or the lot is in disrepair. And that's another issue which I plan to bring up. I don't want to burden you with that, but I have a stack of pictures over here that I've taken since I've been here of dilapidated houses that has just been sitting for years, sitting for years. And it makes me wonder why you consistently complain about E. Roger Stinson and his Stinson property. And I hear that a lot, and that's a problem, and I think it's an issue that we have to address. I was told by someone that the individual stated that where he does what the boss tells him to do, you know? And if that's the criteria, that's a bad criteria. That's the wrong criteria.
Mr. Stinson, this is a public hearing to amend to community commercial, and I'll restate the question. Community commercial would imply a commercial business, and I did ask what the specific nature of the business would be. I didn't, I don't think I heard the answer to that question.
Yeah, well, a coffee shop. That was the idea, was to have someplace where individuals in the community could stop, have a cup of coffee, ice cream, smoothie, cold water. Again, I find that when I come to Millersville, there is no place that I can, I can go with individuals that I grew up with and that I know and have a relationship with and outdoors, sit, have a cup of coffee, and talk about old times. Okay? So that's the concept, is to, is ideally located, in my opinion. It's right in town. I think it would be ideal. I think it would be a benefit. It's two blocks from GMC. And we don't plan to just put up some dump, you know? So it's an investment. It's not an investment just to the Stinsons. It's an investment to the community.
Have you got any plans? Can you show us any plans that you have that you can?
Haven't gotten that far. I've been doing a lot of research in terms of, you know, I have the dimensions because I had to provide the dimensions with the application. So it's, it has to be, you know, a small, it'll be a small facility, really.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Have you talked to neighbors in the neighborhood there or did a survey or poll to see if they are for or against your coffee shop?
No, I didn't. I didn't. But as I stated in my presentation, there was only one individual that objected.
The reason why I ask is because I've gotten several phone calls, and there were neighbors who were saying they were against it.
They didn't invoice it at the planning and zoning. There was one individual. That individual owns the apartment next door.
I have a, Mr. Stinson, if I may. Are your plans to use the existing buildings, or do you plan on taking the buildings down and erecting a new building? What, you've got a lot of unanswered questions in trying to start into a business.
Well, I think I provided a statement, in my statement that I provided stating what I would do with the existing building on the property. I just contracted to have all the windows replaced in that, in that small house. And actually, it's a very solid house, contrary to what people may think. Some years back, I had had some sheet rock done inside the house, and, you know, it's just been sitting there. I had a gentleman power wash it, you know, he had power washed it. But after they finished installing the windows, I plan to have it painted. And because the coffee shop slash restaurant would be so small, well, ideally, the thought is, is that the small house could be used as management, storage, business-type facilities to facilitate the little, small restaurant.
Attorney Jordan, get some man?
Yes, sir. I say this with all due respect, I certainly appreciate people who want to invest in the community and up on this day, as you have a number of business people. With planning and zoning, the first word of that is planning. And all due respect, it sounds to me like there's not a concrete plan yet, and there very well could be. And I had a procedural question for either Attorney Jordan or the mayor. What are the options here for this body to allow a timetable to resubmit once Mr. Stinson has perhaps more of the planning process and can be able to attend a P&amp;Z hearing?
Couple of things. One, it can be referred back to planning and zoning for Mr. Stinson to do that, to submit plans to them. It can be tabled in this proceeding for further consideration. And then you would set a date certain for Mr. Stinson to return with whatever requirements the council chose to impose. So you can do one or two of those. Mr. Stinson could also ask to withdraw his application until such time as he is prepared to present more detailed planning. If he asks to withdraw his application, obviously, that has to be approved by council to allow him to do that, to allow him to do it either without prejudice, which would mean he could come back at any time that he chose to do so, or with prejudice, which you could impose up to six months for him to reapply. He would have a six-month waiting period before he could actually reapply.
Any other questions for Mr. Stinson, counsel?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Would you consider to withdraw this, this without prejudice? Would you consider to take it back to planning and zoning?
See, I'm not clear. I'm not certain. What is it that, because I didn't get any feedback from planning, any feedback from planning and zoning, with the exception that I believe Ms. Graham stated that they weren't certain what you were going to do with the small building. And I think I answered that here tonight.
I think, I think our concern, Mr. Stinson, is we're not sure what you're going to do with anything. I mean, you, there's just, there's got to be a lot more. One of our responsibilities not only is to encourage business, but it is also our responsibility to encourage business that has been thoroughly planned and thought through. That creates the atmosphere for a successful business. I don't speak out of book knowledge about that. I speak out of 35 years of owning a small business. And I think that any time that we have someone that comes before us and we're looking at changing the face, whether it be in a small amount or a large amount within a neighborhood, and we're looking at the things that are possibly going to happen, such as parking lots. Nothing has been referred to with that, you know, whether or not there's going to be parking on grass, whether or not you're going to. I think you're going to be required to have a structural type surface to do that with. These type things that concern us, not only about your startup, but about the longevity of what we are deciding on. And even though your business may succeed, or if it indeed did fail, we have done something in changing the property as far as the zoning is concerned, and that still stays with the property. And thereby, another business could possibly come in. We would not maybe have the same control parameters or things of that nature once that did happen. So that, that becomes the concern of ours, not just the immediate effect upon neighbors, upon other businesses, upon you, but, but the long-term situation. And I think that's where, where we have to make our decisions from.
Mr. Stinson, judging from what I've heard from counsel and what you have presented to us tonight, I would like to ask you to seriously consider, as Mr. Mullins has said, to withdraw this. And certainly, our code enforcement, in particular, Ms. Graham, will be available to you and our attorney if you have some legal questions as to what your responsibility is to present to planning and zoning. And if, if you do choose to withdraw, certainly we'll take it up among this body as to if it would be with or without prejudice. That may give you a little bit more time to answer some of the questions, not only that the council has, planning and zoning has, but also some of the questions that you have as to the proper procedure of this. We don't want to be unfair to you. But I hear a lot of questions on all sides that it may be to your best benefit to ask to withdraw this and then let us get those questions answered for you and for us.
Yeah, I'm not certain, really. I mean, I'm conflicted on this because I think I've read your regulations, I mean, what you have. And I think I have abided by those. I provided what was required. See, that's what's perplexing to me, is that I met your written requirement. And now I'm hearing something else. I mean, you mentioned something about parking, about covered parking, or should it be? I haven't seen anything in your code or your regulations that says or addresses, well, this has to be cemented, for instance. That's, that doesn't seem to be on me. I mean, that's, you know, so if you're asking me to withdraw, then how do I get those answers when I met what your requirements were initially?
Well, what we're asking would certainly help your argument, I think, is what everybody's trying to tell you, and to answer the questions that you have. If we go through this and council, and council happens to uphold planning and zoning, then you're, you're under a requirement of time that you're going to have to wait. If you would consider to withdraw it at this point and then let us help you as far as answering questions, it would certainly help us if, if you had the answers to those questions to come back to us. uh, it would certainly help us if, if you had the answers to those questions to come back to us.
If I withdraw, what's, what's the timeframe we're talking about?
If you're allowed, if counsel allows you to withdraw it without prejudice, then there is no, uh, timeframe. You can start the process whenever you decide that you've got your plans together and you want to submit them back to, uh, planning and zoning. You do have to go back through planning and zoning, uh, and then come again before this counsel. As the mayor said, if this counsel denies your request, in other words, upholds the decision of planning and zoning, the ordinance would forbid you from seeking to rezon that property for 12 months. And so that's the significance of the suggestion that, uh, to be on your best foot, to present your best case for rezoning, that you may want to consider, uh, asking counsel to allow you to withdraw your application, uh, without prejudice.
And that's certainly your prerogative.
Yeah, I, I understand. And, um, again, what I'm conflicted over again is the fact that there seems to be no rules, and I'm being asked to go back and follow some rules, um, that I thought that I had followed, so.
And, and I think that's, I think that's part of it, you, you're not real sure, and we're trying to give you an opportunity to be sure. I mean, this is, you know, this is not the, the first rezoning that, that we have undertaken or has been presented to, to this body. And, uh, we certainly don't want, uh, you to have, uh, made a decision not, in not being very clear of what we expect of you. So, I mean, that, that, that's all we're offering to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one thing, Mr. Stinson, you, you have followed the requirements to ask for the rezoning to be granted. You have provided a rough sketch.
Right.
You have, uh, you have, uh, you probably paid your money. You have, um, it's been advertised, uh, the signage has been put up, so on and so forth. Those, those are the simple parts of rezoning. On our end of it, and I reiterate what I tried to state earlier, when we rezon something, we have to take into consideration not just the, the simple sketch or anything of that nature. We want to be sure that what we're going to grant is a viable alternative to where it is now. And in doing so, we have to feel comfortable as a body, and that this is going to have every opportunity to be successful. And then, one more further point, is that as far as I'm concerned, I don't feel very warm and fuzzy this evening. I don't feel comfortable in that you have done your homework in providing what you're going to do with this piece of property, once we grant this rezoning.
You know, I respectfully disagree with you. I've stated all along, and I don't know how I can make it any clearer, that we plan to put a coffee shop slash restaurant on it. And then I went and I described to some degree what that entity would do and how it would operate. You know, I, I, I don't know what else I can, I can do, uh, and I don't know whether other entities and individuals who've come before you for rezoning, uh, had to do something any different. And whether, you know, things are being made up on the fly here. Coffee shop, a coffee shop, you drink coffee. You know, we plan to build it with Stinson money, uh, and we think it was, it's on Stinson property. We pay taxes. It was my brother's property, and we've been paying taxes for a long time, uh, to the city, okay? And, uh, we've been spending a lot of money. Harold Simmons, I get letters, I got a stack of letters from Harold Simmons, stays on my back. And I live in Virginia, okay? And, uh, you know.
Mr. Stinson.
Where I live, let me just say this, where I live in Virginia, you have little small entities where that's all they do. I mean, they sell coffee. I mean, you know, it doesn't get any simpler than that. And little oddities, I mean, we're not gonna sell any drugs, I don't want to sell any alcohol. I want it to be an ongoing entity that's beneficial to Millisville, just like your cleaners is beneficial to Millisville and you.
You're not being treated any differently from anybody else, because in that district over there, there has been 28 dilapidated structures that have been removed from over there, one of which we worked on a long time getting it removed, and we're trying to clean the area up and make it look good. You're not being treated differently from anybody else, because anybody that's got anything dilapidated over there, it's, it's gonna be reported and, and, and hopefully, something's gonna be done about it.
I'm not just talking about over there.
That, that's throughout the city, Mr. Stinson, before we get off, get off into that realm.
Hold, hold on just a second.
I, I have a question, consent-
Just a second. I mentioned earlier that we certainly want to give you time, we want everybody to speak, but, but I also said, time is of the essence, and keep it brief, and also, remain to the subject.
Yeah, I know, that's why I tried to-
No, sir, we're not here to discuss what type of citations that you've gotten from code. We're here to discuss what planning and zoning, uh, has determined as to, uh, the proper use in, in rezoning this. So, uh, the, the complaints or the evidence that you have, as far as what code has given you, i- is not part of this discussion.
Okay.
Okay?
I agree.
And, and respectfully say that, that's not part of this discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do have a question about the, um, rezoning. Um, Mrs. Stinson, I never did hear you say what type of building you were putting on, on that particular lot. You said you had drawn a sketch, but what, brick building?
My thoughts are now is to build a building now. We haven't concluded, you know, I keep looking at these prefabs and I don't like them, okay? You know, I, I'm talking about something that, that has some, uh, character to it, you know, as much character as possible. And, you know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
See, one of the things when we talk about, um, giving you some more time, what we're accustomed to is when something is presented to planning and zoning, we have a sketch, and then we have a sketch of what the proposed building is going to look like a, as it blends into the neighborhood. And they have drawings with shrubbery and, and, and any type of buffer that they're going to have between your business and the existing, um, um, homes or anything in the area. We're accustomed to that being presented, as well as planning and zoning. They're accustomed to having those types of things presented with the case, and it gives us an idea of, of how that business is going to look as it blends into the community and how it fits into the community. They'll show the driveways and how, how people, you know, how people are gonna enter and exit to the business and back to the street, and all of that is provided so that we can, whenever we do it, we can make a decision, because we have a picture painted for us that, that, that will tell us what it looks like. And like Mr. Chambers said, our concern is, once we zone something commercial, let's say, for instance, if something happens to you physically and you are no longer able to take care of that business, and your family members are not able to take care of it, well, then we have a commercial piece of property and a commercial business there, and then your family decides to sell it. We have no control over what else can come into that, because if they are a commercial business, anything can be a part of that neighborhood, right there where, um, where your business was. So we have to be concerned not only about what you're doing, but, but what may happen in the future as well, so that we can make a good decision for this community, and that's all we're asking.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I heed, and again, planning and zoning, I provided to planning and zoning the information that I was told that was required.
Okay, but that's why we're giving you an opportunity to, to, to do something different, to give you an idea of what planning and zoning is accustomed to receiving, what we're, because whatever you provide for planning and zoning is provided on to us for us to take a look at. Or you could've came in and handed out your own drawings to us as, as to how your business would look, would fit, look and fit into that community, and then we could make a decision.
I understand, and I would agree with Mr. Chambers. If I had been told that, and I'm gonna cut this, I know, that, that you need architectural drawings before planning and zoning.
But that's why we're trying to allow you to withdraw it without prejudice.
We wouldn't say architectural, but I mean, you know, something, something other than, uh, you know, I, I want to reiterate, what this body is trying to do is, is to help you get your questions answered, so that when you come back to us, we're, we're being, uh, as fair as, as possible as we can. And I, and I think you, you would be better, have a better reception with planning and zoning, the more information that they have. It's my understanding, no one was here, uh, to even plead, uh, your case on it. So, I mean, it's, uh, you know, there are a lot of questions that they had, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's why I said it should've been tabled, but yes.
Well, we are, but we're, in essence, we are trying to-
I'm talking about planning and zoning, but we can do that now.
But that, but that's not, that's, that's not actually their, their job to do. They're actually to look at the, the facts and make a decision.
I've seen it, I've, I've, I've seen where those, if they had questions, there was a tabling.
Well, planning and zoning is ruled generally is, when the applicant does not show up to pursue his or her case, they send it on to the mayor and counsel. They, they do not table it unless an applicant calls and says, "I cannot be at the meeting," and therefore, the request can be tabled.
Yeah.
Then they will table it in that case, but not when the applicant does not show up and gives notice of not showing up.
Okay, okay. Well, I'd do what you recommend.
You want, you would like to withdraw?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel members, uh, Mr. Stinson has elected to withdraw. I presume, uh, your request is without prejudice, so that you will have time, uh, to withdraw this, uh, without prejudice, and I'll need a motion to that effect.
Go move.
Second.
The motion's in a second, any further discussion? Here, no, and ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schindholz, sir?
Aye.
That passes and is, um, and is withdrawn without prejudice. I, I would encourage you, since you are from out of state, if you would, at your earliest convenience, to sit down with either our legal counsel or our code enforcement folks and, and try to find out a little bit more about the procedures, and we welcome you back when that happens. Uh, we'll move on to new business. Meredith Lipson from Malden and Jenkins is here to give us a report on our annual audit. Meredith?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all this evening, um, and to, um, to talk about the, the annual, um, audit for the city of Millisville. The audit, of course, is for your fiscal year ended June 30, 2012. It was filed, um, as required by the State Department of Audits by December 31st. Um, it was also filed with the Government Finances Officers Association to, um, participate, once again, in the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. The city has received that award for quite a number of years, um, and we anticipate that it will, once again, receive the award for your fiscal year 2012. What I've passed out to you all this evening is what we refer to as our audit agenda. It includes, um, information that we, as auditors, are required to communicate to you all, as well as, um, some, uh, some graphs and charts, um, to give you a little bit of an overview of the financial information. I've also included within the document, um, any recommendations or findings that we had, as well as some of the, uh, new standards that are coming out in the next couple of years, that, um, there's quite a few of them. Some will affect the city's financial reporting, others not so much, but just wanted to keep you all abreast of some of the changes that are out there on the financial, um, reporting horizon. Um, I believe you all have, um, if I'm not mistaken, have been given a copy of the, the comprehensive annual financial report. It's a, it's a pretty voluminous document, um, and so what I usually, um, like to do is to encourage you all, if you don't want to read the whole thing, um, to focus in on the management's discussion and analysis. That begins just after our audit report, um, and it starts on page four, I believe, is the management's discussion and analysis. This is written by management, it's not written by us, we just make sure that the information that, uh, is contained in there is consistent with the financial statements themselves. But it gives a lot of, um, um, information on the reasons why things varied from the prior year, um, as well as just some more specific information on the funds. So again, if you don't have the opportunity to read that whole big document, I would focus in on that management discussion and analysis. As far as the audit goes, um, our audit opinion was unqualified. That's a clean opinion, that's the, the one that you want. As always, the financial statements are the responsibility of city management and, uh, city council. Our responsibility is to statements based on our audit procedures. And, and again, we did issue an unqualified, clean opinion. I'd like to, if I could, to, to kind of look through this audit agenda document as opposed to the actual financial statements. I think we can, um, we can cover what would probably be of most interest to you all, and if not, then I'll feel free to ask questions and I'll, I'll address them, um, be happy to address those. The first couple of pages of this document talk about Malden and Jenkins, um, and our firm, and, um, our involvement in governmental auditing, as well as in other industries, just in case you all are not familiar with our firm. On page three, we talk about our audit opinion, which again, as I mentioned, is an unqualified, clean opinion. And then on page four, we start, um, talking about the financial statements and give a brief overview of how the statements themselves are organized. Um, there's a lot of information there, but I think there's certain pieces of it that you all will be most interested in. And that is mainly the general fund. The general fund is, of course, the, the heart and soul of your, of your financial operations. It's where all the city department's expenditures are reported, as well as the majority of the city's revenues. If you look on page five, you'll see two, um, two pie charts. The first one, um, shows the, the various revenue sources, um, of the city, and the second one is the, the various expenditure categories for the general fund. As far as revenue goes, um, you all had about 9.4 million in revenue for fiscal year 2012, compared to about 10.1 million in the previous year. There's somewhat of a decrease there, mainly because of, um, a decrease in your property taxes, as well as, um, a decrease in some of the other taxes that you collect, local option sales tax, um, there's a variety of, of smaller taxes that you collect. And again, you can see the categories there, you all actually, um, your property taxes and your sales taxes are pretty comparable. You all collect just about as much from both sources, um, which is a little bit unusual. A lot of places, um, um, property taxes tend to far outweigh the other revenues. But here, um, it's pretty consistent with what you collect in sales tax revenues as well. The second chart with your expenditures, uh, total expenditures were about 10.1 million. The prior year was about 10.2 million. So you pretty much held your expenditures, um, pretty close to the previous year, but your revenue sources did not, um, contribute quite as much as you had anticipated. And, um, because of that, you all did have a, a decrease, um, in your fund balance for, um, the fiscal year. On page six, we've got a, a five-year history of your fund balance, and you can see, um, the fund balance did decrease, you know, approximately $700,000 from 2011 to 2012. This is not something that we see, um, unusual right now. Um, a lot of governments are having to, um, dip into their fund balances, they struggle with, with, you know, trying to come up with either new revenue sources or increased revenue sources, and then still holding the expenditures to what they have been in the past. So, um, while it's not something to be excited about, um, just know that you all are not alone. as far as, as having to use your fund balance. There's nothing really to worry so much about unless you have to continue to use that fund balance year after year, and that's where you, you'll get yourself, you know, into a pickle. You all did have about $2.8 million in cash and cash equivalents on hand at June 30th. Now, you have to remember, at June 30th, that's just a snapshot in time. That doesn't mean that you had 2.8 million, you could go spend however you wanted. That money really had to carry you through until October, November, December, when you started collecting those property taxes, because from June until, say, October, you have, your revenue sources are somewhat limited. So, that fund balance and that cash you had on hand pretty much carried you through till you started collecting your property taxes again. That's really a, a real brief overview of the general fund, and I'll be glad to address any specifics that you have. Other than your general fund, you also have several other special revenue funds and capital projects funds, mainly your, your special purpose sales tax fund. That's your capital projects fund. Of course, all that money is restricted to be used for specific capital projects that were approved by, by your citizens. Your special revenue funds, you have several small ones. All the revenues that are in there are restricted either by grantor agencies or some other kind of, of restriction. They cannot be used just for general purposes, so that's why we segregate them from your general fund. On page seven, you'll see the two charts for your two enterprise funds, your water and sewer fund and your solid waste fund. Both of these funds generate revenues more than sufficient to cover their operations, and that's really important. A lot of times, we'll see where the idea behind these enterprise funds is for them to be self-sufficient, but many times, what happens is other funds, like the general fund, have to supplement the operations. That's not the case here. Again, your, your two enterprise funds generate revenues sufficient to cover the operations and actually could, you know, in certain situations, if necessary, help supplement some of the other operations of the city. I did want to note one thing with your solid waste fund. Solid waste funds are not known for being self-sufficient. A lot of times, it's very difficult to be able to hold your expenditure, your expenses to a level that the revenues that you are charging are able to cover those, and you all have been able to do that. And that's, that's, hats off to you all for doing it. Like I said, I, I don't normally see a, a solid waste fund that's self-sufficient, so you're doing, you're doing something right there, and, and that's good, because that's one less thing that the, the general fund has to supplement. On page eight, I give a little bit of an overview of, of the CAFRA, your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and the different sections that are in there, and then also talk about the two compliance reports that are included. One is a report on government auditing standards, the other is a report in accordance with A133. You all did expend an excess of $500,000 in federal funding this year, so you all were required to have additional compliance procedures done on some of those larger grants, and a report was issued on those as well, and it's included within your, your CAFRA document. Pages nine through 11 contain information that we, as auditors, are required to communicate to you all under the standards that guide us. I could stand up here and tell this all, read all this to you, but instead, I'm giving it to you all so that you can read it at your leisure. But this is the same information that you all have seen in the past, that really deals with accounting policies, accounting estimates, audit adjustments. We, we did have some audit adjustments this year, and they have all been delivered to the finance department and posted so that the books are in agreement with, with the financial statements. Again, just a few various other pieces of information. And then on the bottom of page 11, over to page 14, we, we documented here some of the findings and recommendations that, that came about as part of our audit procedures. As far as findings go, we did have a couple of issues with some journal entries that needed to be made as far as revenue recognition and intergovernmental receivables. Most audits that we, that we work with, there are adjustments that are just inherent, that happen during the audit process, a lot of it due to timing, you know, things that didn't happen until so close to the year end or after year end that need to be put back into the fiscal year that's being audited. And we did, in, in, for this fiscal year, have some of those audit adjustments regarding revenues and intergovernmental receivables. We also had an issue as far as your pooled cash account. You all, rather than maintaining individual accounts for all of the different activities, you all utilize the pooled, a pooled cash account. There are some issues with the reconciliation process. The, the account really was not reconciled at, at year end, and even through our audit process, there were still some differences that were unable to be located. And I think a lot of it has to do with the, the software. The software is allowing certain things to happen, and I know that your individuals in finance have been in contact with the software company. They're trying to figure out, they're trying to figure out the issues, but as of June 30th, the account was not, was not reconciled, and that's extremely important that that is done on a monthly basis, because once you let a couple of months go by, it can snowball in, you know, the adjustments, and trying to figure out where that difference is. So, that's one thing we really strongly recommend, is that that be addressed as soon as possible. The other items that we have included on the ba, bottom of page 13 and on to 14 are just recommendations, things that we felt like may could improve the overall efficiencies and controls of the operations of the city. Some of these we've brought up in the past. They relate to, to putting in writing a fraud risk management program, something that will address what risks you all feel may be out there and how you will handle those risks if necessary. Additionally, we feel like there should be a, a process in place for journal entry procedures. Right now, the same individual is able to make a journal entry, write up a journal entry, and actually post it, and there needs to be a review process in place for that, where someone at a, at a more management, higher level is reviewing those journal entries to make sure that they are being recorded properly to the proper accounts.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
We have two finance people on one, checks with the other. Does this sound like Mr. Jarrett? Is this what you said?
That's correct.
Make sure you use your microphones, folks.
That's correct. And what the audit shows is not always is that done, whether two check between each other.
Correct.
So, that's, that's what's pointed out in the audit report, and everything's just.
Yeah.
That be sufficient? If, if, if it is always done? I mean, when the audit, when, when y'all come back, is that sufficient, or do we need to put something else in place, or what?
If that is done, that, that is sufficient. I will say the, the ideal, the ideal situation is for a journal entry to be prepared by, by someone at a certain level and, and someone at the higher level reviewing that. In your situation, because you have two individuals kind of at the same level, it's kind of difficult to do. A few other things, and I'll, I'll be brief. Again, these are really just recommendations, things that we just felt like need to be brought to your attention. We always do a dispersment test as part of our, of, part of our testing of expenditures, and we draw a sample of dispersments and look for certain things like approvals and making sure that there's supporting documentation. We did notice that there's no indication of approval when checks are written for refunds of water deposits, and that's one of those things, there's no invoice to, to staple to that, but it's important that there be some person approving that refund to make sure that it's as legitimate. You know, we certainly saw nothing that would indicate that, that these were not. However, it would be very easy to issue checks, you know, and call them water refunds. So, just another one of those control, control, controls that should be put in place. The city did finally implement the capital asset, asset module of its software system, meaning it took its capital assets and the related depreciation and put them actually into a system as opposed to an Excel spreadsheet. The Excel spreadsheet can cause all kinds of, of errors, calculation errors, but it's in a system now. I commend you all for that, because that's going to be huge going forward. We did feel like, though, as, as we did the audit, that there needed to be some additional training maybe, or I guess a better understanding for those individuals involved in, in handling this process, as far as what the software was capable of and how things should be done. It was, there were a lot of questions that we were not really able to, to get addressed until we dug a little bit deeper into it, and I think it's just a matter of some additional training needed in that area. We also test retirement benefits, and there was one personnel file that was not able to be located. Not sure what happened to it, but of those that we tested, there was one that was, was not there. And then finally, segregation of duties. Of course, ideally, anyone who has custody of cash does not also handle the record-keeping of cash or any distribution of cash in an ideal situation. We do understand that there, there's a limited number of employees and, and you have to weigh the cost-benefits of hiring someone else just so you can have complete segregation of duties, but there are, there was one thing that we noticed that we thought should possibly be addressed. There's not a report that is reviewed on a, on a ongoing basis when master files are changed for vendors or employees, and we just recommend that there be a process in place whereby any changes to the vendor master files, where a new vendor is created, or the employee file, where a new employee is added to the system, that there be something in place where that has to be approved. You know, in the world we live in, it, it could easily happen where a vendor, a fictitious vendor, a fictitious employee could be created and, and be paid and no one really realized it. Again, we saw nothing that indicated that, but it's just one of those things that, I, I guess it's one of those things auditors think about all the time, but it's something to be, to be cognizant of, and so we're just recommending that a, a procedure be put in place for that. We also audit your component units, allied arts, the library, and this year, the downtown development authority. As far as allied arts, we did, they, I think due to lack of, of sufficient accounting personnel there, they don't tend to post our audit entries every year, and we had that issue again. It, it's not a, a big problem, but it's one of those things that they're aware of, it's just a matter of getting it done. But as far as, as the, the component units go, everything went, went smoothly with those this year. Finally, on pages 15 through pretty much the end of the document, we have listed all of the new, the GASB standards that are out there, that are on the horizon. A few of them were implemented in this current year, they really had no effect on you all. There are some in, well, for fiscal year 2013 and especially for 2014, that will have some effect on your financial reporting. It won't, it won't make any changes to your day-to-day operations, but it's important that the finance personnel are aware of the changes when it comes to the financial reporting. And so, we've kind of included an overview of, of all of these standards. As you can see, just a few years ago, they were around number 14 or 15, now they're up to like 70 something. But all of that information is included in here, I'll, I'll let you read that at your leisure as well. But again, we, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you all, appreciate the opportunities to meet with you all, and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have now, or if you think of something as you're reading this at your leisure. Please don't hesitate to, to give us a call. We're happy to provide any specifics or suggestions, anything that, that you've got.
Council members, any questions for Meredith?
Probably give you a call later on this evening. Won't take me long to go through it.
Ashley, leave me a message, and I'll get back to you in the morning.
Auditors deserve a little levity, you know that. Uh, we do thank you for the work you do for us, and Mr. Jarrett, pass along our appreciation to the staff and employees. They are the ones that actually make those audits what they are. They're always good, and I always tease audits from my banking background, it's your job to find things that are wrong and correct them right. As long as it's not too, too dire, we're okay.
Right, we, we hope to find nothing wrong and, and, but every now and then.
Good, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next, council members, some of you may be aware, three or four years ago, we established a mayor's commission for youth leadership in conjunction with Georgia College and State University and, and some of those who assist us with that program. Each year, the mayor's commission is given from, given a list of, of projects that they might be interested in to, to work on in our community to make Millersville a better place, and particularly among youth. And this year, the mayor's commission has chosen a particular project that they wanted to, that you know about, and utilize all the media outlets that are available to them, including social media, radio, YouTube, and so forth. They had asked if they could come, tell you, I think they're very proud of the, the work they're doing. I spent all day in Atlanta with them, so I, I know that they are, they are working, trying to expand their minds and also do what they can to, to make Millersville a better place for, for all of us, but in particularly the youth. So, we have two representatives from the mayor's commission, and I do want to recognize Mr. Isaac Cleveland, who is the director of this particular program and, and is assisting them through this project, and I'd like to call those representatives up this evening, if you would give your name and go ahead and tell us what project you've chosen and what you're working on this year.
Hello, my name is Ken Trez Werden.
And good evening, my name is Jamarcus Jarrett.
And we are two members of the Mayor Commission of Youth Leadership.
The Mayor's Commission on Youth Leadership meets weekly from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at Ball High School, and monthly in the city hall chambers with Mayor Bentley from 6:00 to 7:30 PM.
The goals of the Mayor Commission of Youth Leadership is to incorporate civic agency goals, so that we develop civic knowledge in our county and community, to learn and apply the civic skills of organizing community and working with others, and value of effectiveness to understand our own capacity to change agents among our peers and throughout the community.
This program aims to help youth develop voice and advocacy skills. All of the participating students were chosen by their adult leaders and recognized as young people who have their, who have the potential to make a difference in the community.
So far, it has been a pleasure working with Mayor Bentley and Mr. Cleveland and learning about the views on leadership. We have learned how to advocate issues that affect our peers, local government, and the community. We also have learned how to make efficient and timely decisions, how to work together with others and organize tasks.
Each year, the mayor's commission develops a project which advocates an issue that is important in the community. This year's project is AAA TVA, which is the acronym for Airways Advocacy Against Teen Violence and Abuse.
And listen, uh, listen for our community service announcement, announcements over several local radio stations, high school, and city council meetings beginning next month.
And get involved, speak against teen violence and abuse. When you witness violence and abuse, report it to the proper authorities.
We thank you all for giving us the opportunity to listen to our thoughts and ideas over the Mayor Commission of Youth Leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, guys. Jamarcus, you have any kin folks in Millersville? That is Mr. Jarrett's grandson, by the way. We are proud of what they are doing, and they're, they're very bright, energetic, and we tend to learn as much from them as, as we try to, to teach them, so I think it's a very good program and, and, and hope you guys realize that later on, and thank you again, Mr. Cleveland, for what you do. Okay, next on the agenda, ask the clerk. Okay, next on the agenda, ask the clerk if he would read ordinance 001 in caption, please.
Yes, sir. This is the first reading of an ordinance to conduct, to allow special use for the recycling center located at 901 South Jefferson Street, Tax Map M44, parcel 54A. Property is currently zone CC and owned by Adam C. Pavian.
Thank you. That's the first read of that ordinance. Council members have assigned the planning and zoning. Next, resolution 001 has been taken off the agenda by request of the city manager. We will address that at a later date. Council members, next, we have two alcohol license applications. They are special events license to consider, and if there's no, if no one is opposed, just as we read multiple alcohol license renewals and/or new issuances, I would like to ask the clerk if he would read both of those and vote on them together. If no opposition, I'll ask the clerk to do so.
Yes, so the first one is for Jason Matters, on behalf of Aubrey Lane's Restaurant. It is for an event where wine would be sold, and it is on March 30, 2013, at 201 East Green Street. That's the first one. The second one is also for Jason Matters, on behalf of Aubrey Lane's Restaurant, for an event to be held April the 19th at 201 East Green Street where wine would be served or sold.
Council members, I'll entertain a motion on both of those, please.
Should we approve?
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion. Hearing none, ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to retire into executive session to discuss a legal matter. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will allow us a moment to retire into executive session, we'll return shortly. Call the meeting back to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Joyner?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum present. No action was taken in our executive session. There's no further business to come before council. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second. Hearing none opposed, we are adjourned.